Welcome everyone to June 12, 2023 special meeting of the Richmond Rent Board. Before we begin, as a courtesy to others, we ask that you please silence your cellphones or any device that, any noise-making devices. Also, I would like to let the public know that this meeting is being interpreted and we ask all comments to be spoken clearly and slowly. So I'll go over a few reminders as well to the public regarding public comments. If you would like to address the board, that a request to speak card must be given to the Assistant Clerk before the announcement of the agenda. If you would like to speak on an item not listed on the agenda or items on the consent calendar, you must do so under the public forum. Again, if you would like to speak on a particular agenda item, you must file a request to speak card before the announcement of the item. Please refer to the Rent Board Meeting Agenda for a list of items on the, or the Agenda Items List for open, list open for public comment posted above the table located in the front of the chambers. The first item on the agenda is pledge to the flag. Please join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just for all.
The next item on the agenda is the roll call. For the purpose of the recording, may I please get an audible roll call from the Rent Board members, from Rent Board members and staff? Board Member Dawkins? Board Member Espinoza? Oh. Board Member Height? Vice Chair Guadalupe?
Here.
And Chair Cantor is absent. Executive Director Nicholas Trailer?
Here.
Deputy Director Fred Tran?
Present.
General Counsel Charles Oshinuga?
I'm here.
And Staff Attorney Palomar Sanchez is absent. For the record, Chair Cantor and Palomar, Staff Attorney Palomar Sanchez is absent. The next item on the agenda is Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Review. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Are there any changes to the agenda from staff?
No changes.
Are there any other changes to the agenda from board members?
Okay. Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is Public Forum. Tonight, we have no public speakers. The next item on the agenda is Item F1. Under Rent Board as a whole, Item F1 is to receive Agenda Report on the Rent Program's Outreach Plan and provide direction related to potential revisions to the proposed fiscal year 2023 through 2024 budget. There are no speakers on this item.
Thank you. We will now hear the staff report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Guadalupe and members of the Rent Board. Nicholas Trailer, Executive Director of the Rent Program. I am presenting today the Rent Program's Comprehensive Outreach Plan and to discuss possible revisions to the budget for fiscal year 2023-24. 11.100.060G of the Fair Rent Just Cause for Eviction and Homeowner Protection Ordinance requires that the Board, through the Rent Program, conduct community education so that residents of Richmond will have the opportunity to be, come informed about their legal rights and duties. At the May 31, 2023 special meeting of the Rent Board, the Board approved Option B and directed staff to present the Rent Program's Comprehensive Outreach Plan. Review of the Comprehensive Outreach Plan and ongoing budget concerns related to posting the entire Agenda Packet in translated form supports consideration of possible revisions to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. In accordance with 11.100.060G of the Fair Rent Just Cause for Eviction and Homeowner Protection Ordinance, the Rent Program performs community education outreach so that community members and rental property owners are aware of their rights and responsibilities of the Richmond Rent Ordinance and associated laws. If landlords and tenants are on the same page about the law, it is more likely the law will be followed and enforced. Community education and outreach activities are funded in a variety of ways, with most costs associated with staffing and lesser costs for supplies, translation, interpretation, and technology. Community outreach and community education work hand in hand. So in order to educate community members, you first must reach out to them and reach them. The Rent Program therefore must have accurate data on those it serves, primarily landlords and tenants and those who assist them. Now let's look at the Comprehensive Outreach Plan in more depth. As I mentioned, successful outreach and education starts with securing accurate data on Richmond landlords and tenants. Towards that end, the Rent Board adopted regulations to compel landlords to register rental properties subject to the Rent Ordinance. In addition to requiring property enrollment and registration of tenancies, public information and enrollment staff engage in research to identify rental properties in the city of Richmond. Using a variety of methods, including subscriptions to property data services, using county and city records, online listings, real estate data, and information gathered from housing counseling sessions, staff then use that information they've gained to perform outreach and education to further encourage compliance with the Rent Ordinance. This compliance-related outreach, which includes mailing enrollment packets, sending out courtesy compliance letters to landlords and tenants, and billing of the rental housing fee, is the starting point for most outreach and education efforts. To fund outreach and education in the agency, the Board has budgeted $269,140 for public information and enrollment staff, and public information enrollment staff spend about 25% to 30% of their time devoted to these outreach and education activities. Excuse me, that's 369,140, I misread. Now, the COVID-19 impact significantly impacted the Rent Program's ability to implement certain aspects of the outreach plan, especially in-person outreach and education activities. Existing outreach and education projects still under development were also delayed due to the pandemic. Among the newly proposed outreach and education projects was expanded outreach to key stakeholders in the community, including local businesses and organizations. Additionally, with 10% of housing counseling sessions conducted in Spanish and a high percentage of the members of the public being Spanish speakers themselves, up to 40%, starting in 2020, all workshops were translated into Spanish and conducted in both Spanish and English.
Excuse me, point of privilege.
Yes.
My mic, my mic, the mic.
Excuse me, point of privilege.
Yes.
I like to follow along when you're reading. Can you say what page you're on and when you go to a new page, you're sort of like, because I'm not sure where you are.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. We are now on page six.
Oh, good, I was on page five.
Okay. Would you like me to read the slide over again? I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, no, no, I just need to.
Okay, great.
Board Member Dawkins, is it on your screen?
Yeah, is your screen working?
It's easier.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
Page three. Slide six.
So the outreach plan establishes certain priorities, and these priorities are based on the unique demographics in the city of Richmond. The Rent Program's Outreach Plan and its activities are tailored and oriented around Richmond's diverse population by performing outreach and education that helps effectuate the purpose of the Rent Ordinance and enforcement of its requirements. Some of these unique demographics include over 40% of the population being of Spanish-speaking descent, 20%, the other unique statistic is that 20% of the rental housing stock is affordable housing. About 57% of the rental housing stock is partially covered by the Rent Ordinance, and that means properties that are not covered by the rent control provisions of the Rent Ordinance but are covered by the requirement to have just cause, to have just cause in order to terminate a tenancy. This, this statistic is particularly important because with such a large rental housing stock that is partially covered, the, being single-family homes and condominiums, these types of properties go in and out of the rental market, which requires additional outreach and education to make sure that those property owners are in compliance with the Rent Ordinance and to make sure that we have good data on which of those properties are still rented or not. 43% of the rental units are rent-controlled, and this statistic is also interesting, 90% of Richmond landlords own five or less rental units. Now, Richmond has about the same population as Berkeley. I think Berkeley has about 20,000 more residents. However, compared to Berkeley's 3,000, approximately 3,000 landlords, Richmond has approximately 5,700 landlords. So we have to focus our outreach around reaching more of those rental property owners than, say, a jurisdiction like Berkeley, which most of its rental units are fully covered by the Berkeley Rent Ordinance. Next slide, please. So next thing we're going to discuss is outreach and education associated with property enrollment and payment of the rental housing fee. At the beginning of each fiscal year, Richmond landlords receive an invoice from the Rent Program to pay the rental housing fee, which funds the Rent Program. Included in the invoice are important updates about changes in the law, frequently asked questions about the Rent Ordinance and landlord rights and responsibilities, among other, among other important information. Billing outreach occurs once a year, usually in July, and again, with such a high number of landlords who own a small number of rental units and a high turnover of potential rental property owners, more staff resources have to be devoted to landlord outreach and education. As a result, staff have prioritized in-person outreach and education through robust counseling and monthly workshops, targeted outreach to new owners, and billing and enrollment outreach, which includes exemption verification outreach and education. Newly discovered rental property owners receive a, an enrollment packet with information about the Rent Ordinance and its requirements, and the public information and enrollment staff send out approximately 300 enrollment packets to newly discovered rental property owners annually. Next slide, please. Since February of 2020, the New Owner Outreach Project was put in place, which focuses on reaching out to new owners of rental property in Richmond. The high number of single-family homes and condominiums rented in Richmond and the frequent sale of those properties requires targeted outreach and education focused on new owners. So in this project, the New Owner Outreach Project, staff review monthly residential property sales, cross-examine those property sales, those new, newly sold properties with the properties in the Rent Program database. Newly identified owners then receive an informational packet informing them of the requirements of the Rent Ordinance and encouraging them to update ownership information as well as the status of the rental unit, whether it's rented or not. This project is key to ensuring that new owners know their rights and obligations under the Rent Ordinance, and we found that some of the largest complaints that we receive from tenants are from new owners who are not aware of their obligations under the Rent Ordinance and end up often failing to comply with its requirements. The New Owner Outreach Project also helps maintain accurate records regarding the rental property, which rental property owners to invoice and where to focus our programmatic services. The New Owner Outreach Project is an ongoing project. Next slide, please. Now the next thing we're going to discuss are exemption verification mailings. Although delayed by the COVID-19 pandemic, usually at least once a year, the Rent Program sends out a mailing to all single-family dwellings, condominiums, and properties that have been claimed as exempt or not rental units to verify if the property is still a rental or not. Verifying the rental status of previously claimed exempt properties and finding properties that have not previously enrolled with the Rent Program is an outreach tool used to discover and compel compliance of unregistered or improperly registered properties. Again, having such a large number of single-family dwellings and condominiums that are rented in Richmond, and with those properties regularly going in and out of the rental market, verifying the status of these properties works to increase the collection rate of the rental housing fee, again, which funds all Rent Program services. Now just as landlord or compliance-related outreach is tailored to Richmond's unique landlord demographics, outreach to tenants in Richmond is also tailored to Richmond's diverse demographics. With, again, with 40% of the population being Spanish-speaking and 10% of counseling sessions conducted in Spanish, having a bilingual staff and holding bilingual educational workshops is a program priority. Housing counseling is one of the most effective forms of educating the public on the Rent Ordinance because of the individual level of attention given to each tenant or landlord's situation, leading to nuanced discussions on rights, responsibilities, and options for recourse. To get that high level of attention, community members can make appointments ahead of time with a housing counselor to make sure that they have enough time and energy that can be devoted to providing accurate and customized individual counseling sessions. I also mentioned that 20% of Richmond's housing stock is affordable housing. So our outreach towards affordable housing is an important part of what we do. Affordable housing is exempt from the rent control provisions of the Rent Ordinance, so most of the outreach and education is focused on eviction-related issues and mediating disputes. Now, affordable housing properties do have onsite management, and onsite management must adhere to state and federal guidelines regarding lawful state-approved rent levels and habitability standards. To ensure that affordable housing tenants and management are aware of the eviction protections provided by the Rent Ordinance and the option to mediate, to resolve disputes, staff have built and maintained relationships with onsite management and regularly conduct onsite educational workshops. I will note that the pandemic, of course, did impact our ability to perform those onsite workshops, but for fiscal year 2023-24, we intend to continue doing that. Now conflicts between management and tenants, as I mentioned, is addressed through Rent Program mediation. Rent Program mediation has been utilized to help prevent unnecessary evictions and address habitability issues. For example, staff have mediated repayment plans, have helped the tenant and landlord access rent assistance resources, and help negotiate rent reductions and repair agreements to address habitability issues. The other thing that I think the Board should know is that staff, in, in order to stay aware of the hot issues that are happening at affordable housing properties, staff hold an interdepartmental meeting monthly with the fire department, police, community development, and the Housing Authority to discuss issues that are occurring at affordable housing sites. Knowing this information allows staff to focus our outreach and education resources We also refer, just to go back to that slide, we also refer affordable tenants to legal assistance with one of the contracted legal service providers in cases where they need legal advice or legal assistance. Next slide, please. So a robust out website is a really important outreach and education tool, and the Rent Program's website is very effective at helping community members access all of the pertinent laws and regulations related to rent control and eviction protections in Richmond, the relocation ordinance, which the Rent Program administers, and other intersecting laws. It also allows landlords and tenants to file rent adjustment petitions, enroll rental properties, pay the rental housing fee, file a rent increaser or eviction notice with the Rent Program, access prerecorded workshops and webinars, view infographic informational videos, listen to frequently asked questions, question podcasts, access information about rent assistance resources, schedule an appointment with a housing counselor or other Rent Program staff member, and access the Agenda Packet for Rent Board Meetings. And of course, any member of the public can contact the Rent Program to inquire about their rights generally. We also have a Rent Program listserv that is connected to the website, so any member of the public can sign up to receive email updates, and we have about 1,600 members of the public who receive ongoing listserv messages from the Rent Program. We also have links on our website to the Rent Program's Facebook and Instagram page and the various posts that have occurred of, over the years. Next slide, please. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, staff regularly attended community events such as the Cinco de Mayo Festival, Juneteenth, National Night Out, neighborhood festivals such as the Point Richmond Neighborhood Music Festival, neighborhood community council meetings, and, and many other community events. Staff intend to begin attending these community events again in the upcoming fiscal year, and in fact, this Saturday, Rent Program staff are scheduled to attend and table at Richmond's Juneteenth Festival. So one of the newest outreach activities that was initiated right prior to the COVID-19 pandemic was identifying and reaching out to, as well as educating, key stakeholders in the community. So Rent Program staff put together a pretty comprehensive list of key businesses, associations, nonprofits. We began visiting local barber shops, food markets, bike shops, and other community gathering spots, handing out our business card, asking whether posters could be put up, and having conversations with community members, and we, we, this proved to be very effective, a very effective way of integrating the Rent Program into the community. We also found that building these relationships with key stakeholders increases word-of-mouth referrals to the Rent Program and its, and its services. And I'd like to give you just one example of the effectiveness of this outreach and education. After staff visited a local barber shop, explained the services provided by the Rent Program, the owner, many months later, contacted that Rent Program staff person to inform the staff that there had been a customer who had been complaining about their housing situation, and they were concerned about being evicted. Having performed that outreach allowed that barber owner to reach out to us directly and say, hey, I remember when you guys came, and I, I have a customer who has this issue, and that barber shop owner connected his client with our staff, and that's, that client, that person was assisted with their, their situation. Next slide. Let me grab a quick drink of water. So one of the programs that we've been working on for many years that has been impacted not only by the pandemic but also by the fact that the city has a database that is very outdated and made it very difficult to fully implement this project, is something called Tenancy Registration, Outreach, and Education. So landlords of rent-controlled units must register each tenancy, and that allows the Rent Program to track the lawful rent level of each tenancy, each rent-controlled tenancy. Part of our plan has been to use that information to send tenants and landlords, again, for rent-controlled units only, a notice informing them of the apparent lawful rent ceiling. Now receiving a notice of the apparent lawful rent ceiling helps keep landlords and tenants on the same page as to what the lawful rent is, which helps avoid potential rent overcharges. It also triggers up follow-up calls to the Rent Program when landlords and tenants are facing issues. Now in 2019, 2020, the Rent Program planned to initiate tenancy registration. However, again, due to the pandemic and the fact that the database needed to be upgraded and that the Rent Program needed to secure a new database, the project was delayed and not fully implemented. Now staff intend to continue development and implementation of this important outreach tool in the upcoming fiscal year. Now, just for the Board's overall knowledge, the city of Richmond is currently evaluating vendors that would support all document, all departments, including the Rent Program, and implementation of And implementation of the database is, our beginning implementation phase of the database is planned for this upcoming fiscal year. And I also just want to note real quickly, there was a very valuable study conducted by the city of Los Angeles in 2012 that revealed that rent-controlled jurisdictions that utilized tenancy registration had much higher levels of compliance. Si.
José, puedes traducir, no estás traduciendo, te quedas callado mucho tiempo. Si puedes traducir, por favor. No, lo que están diciendo, lo que pasa es que te estás quedando callado mucho tiempo.
Sí, es que...
Sí, sí lo tengo, pero si no, no vayas leyendo, ve diciendo lo que va diciendo él.
She just asked me to try to not read up what's here, just to try to...
Are we ready? Okay. So, another key outreach and education method that is hardcoded into the rent ordinance and rent board regulations is the eviction noticing requirement and its associated outreach and education. So, in Richmond, landlords of controlled rental units are required to submit a copy to the rent program of any notice of termination of tenancy served on a tenant within two business days of having served the tenant. Having received a notice from the landlord and with this information, the rent program is able to monitor eviction trends and is able to conduct special outreach to tenants and landlords who are engaged in this eviction process. After the rent program receives a notice of termination of tenancy, staff send both the tenant and the landlord an informational letter outlining eviction protections and requirements, as well as referrals to legal assistance resources. Tenants and landlords who receive the eviction-related informational letters usually contact the rent program. Now, this leads to important discussions that can help prevent unnecessary or unlawful evictions, costly mistakes for landlords who may end up engaging in the eviction process erroneously. And it's also important to note that after contacting the rent program, landlords and tenants often avail themselves to other rent program services, such as eviction defense legal assistance that is provided through our contracted legal service agencies, the rent adjustment petition process, mediation, and self-help resources that are available on our workshop. This is eviction noticing, the eviction noticing requirement outreach and education is an ongoing project.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes.
If I remember correctly, the affordable housing segment of our rental properties only fall under our concern when it comes to eviction, right?
That's correct.
So, do we send, are those managers sending us notice of evictions that they're doing for affordable housing people?
Yes, usually they are. If we find out about an eviction notice having been served on a tenant and we have not received a copy of it, we send a courtesy compliance letter to the affordable housing provider. And we also, over the years, have been, as I mentioned, building these relationships with management at these sites to make sure that they know what the requirements are. These relationships have obviously led to the ability to have correspondence when there's landlord-tenant issues at affordable properties. But it's also led to us going onsite to these properties and doing presentations for both the tenants and land, and management. And these presentations, of course, inform them about the requirements, the noticing requirements of the rent ordinance.
The reason I ask is I live in an affordable housing. And although I'm not that familiar with a lot of tenants, I see U-Hauls coming up and people say, oh, X, Y, Z got evicted. And I was wondering, in that case, had we reached out to that property owner and to the tenant to let them know that there could be some help that we could give them?
Generally, yes. And the reason why we generally find about, find out about these eviction proceedings that have been started is that the affordable housing providers and management understand that if they do not follow the eviction noticing requirement to give us a copy within the two-day period, failure to do so is a complete, or can be a complete defense to an eviction lawsuit. And, and so they understand, and their attorneys understand, that not following that rule could be very problematic for them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Let me also add that if you guys need to take a break, remember, we could take a break at any time. So, it's up to you, vice chair, whenever you want to announce a break for anyone, for the interpreter or whatever.
Okay, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we have to, have to announce when we taking a break. So, everyone agree to take a break, or how are we doing?
You have to, I'm sorry.
To vote, right?
Yeah, you have to make a motion.
Okay, just kidding, we want a ten-minute break.
You have to make a motion, so you have to ask someone to make a motion in a second to vote for a break.
Does anybody want to make a motion for us to take a break?
Five minutes?
I second.
Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Ten-minute break? Okay, Board Member Espinoza. And who seconds?
I second the motion.
Board Member Height. So, we're, we're going to take a break. Let me take a vote. Board Member Dawkins? To take a break, Board Member, you, you agree? Okay, I called your name to say yes or no. I'm taking a vote. Yes, do you take, yes, okay. Board Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay. Board Member Height?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Guadalupe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with Chair Cantor absent. To take a break at what time?
Five forty-two.
How many minutes, you said, ten minutes?
Ten minutes, yeah.
So, we come back at five fifty-two.
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Meeting called to order at five fifty-three.
Chair, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, we are on, is it slide eighteen on paper? Not sure, we have it up on the screen as well. Okay. So, there are other types of outreach and education that help compel compliance and help effectuate the enforcement of the rent ordinance. Among them are two special forms of outreach and education that are performed on a case-by-case or as-needed basis. Those include courtesy compliance letter outreach and education and outreach related to certain types of just cause evictions, particularly no-fault evictions, such as owner move-ins and withdrawal from the rental market. For example, in situations where the rent program becomes aware of violations of the rent ordinance, staff send out a courtesy compliance letter to both the landlord and tenant, informing them of the violation and encouraging them to contact the rent program for assistance. For owner move-ins and withdrawal from the rental market, additional, we perform outreach that's associated with some of the requirements of these no-fault evictions. So, for example, when a tenant receives an owner move-in eviction notice, we send the tenant and the landlord information about their rights and responsibilities under the owner move-in just cause eviction, as well as making sure that all the proper forms are provided to the landlord in order for them to perform, to follow the rules regarding these types of no-fault evictions. Now, additional forms of outreach and education include rent increase-related outreach and education and outreach related to important updates in the law, including educating the public on the varied laws that came about during the COVID-19 pandemic, and making sure that landlords and tenants had comprehensive information in the form of a comprehensive fact sheet. Now, in terms of rent increase-related outreach, we make sure that when the annual general adjustment or the allowable annual rent increase is, is approved by the rent board, that we get the information out to both landlords and tenants about the allowable rent increase percentage. We do that by sending out a listserv message. We update the rent program's website, update all of the forms related to increasing rents. And oftentimes, we send out a postcard to both landlords and tenants in rent-controlled units to make sure they are aware of the allowable increase. Now, outreach and education related to program messaging helps communicate to the public how the rent program effectuates the purpose of the rent ordinance through its services and how this ultimately is connected to the health of the community. Now, the rent ordinance requires that the rent program provide an annual report to the city council at least once a year. At this presentation, the executive director, or his or her designee, provides the city council and community with statistics and information about rents and evictions in Richmond and the services provided by the rent program. The rent program's annual report acts as a central messaging tool for explaining how the program effectuates the purpose of the rent ordinance and the role it plays in protecting and preserving the health of the community. Rent program staff have produced both comprehensive written annual reports for each fiscal year, as well as annual reports in the form of infographic informational videos. Now, there are two projects that we are, that are under development and possibly may occur, although it depends on the board's direction and it also depends on some other factors. One of them is kind of an expansion of our targeted outreach to community stakeholders. Like that program that was put in place right before the pandemic, staff would visit key stakeholders and not just hand out business cards or flyers, but actually set up presentations and do some educating for those stakeholders to make sure that those key stakeholders have a general understanding of how the rent ordinance works so that they can better assist community members who they work with. Now, the board did request that the, that staff look into the implementation of hybrid board meetings. We did meet with the city's IT department and we checked with the city attorney's office to see what our options were. At this time, it appears that although there, there could be a potential situation in the future where hybrid board meetings could take place, currently, any hybrid board meeting effort would have to work with and through the ID, IT department and the city of Richmond in terms of being able to receive the support, the necessary support from the city to be able to hold hybrid board meetings. So, at this time, hybrid board meetings cannot be included in the, or cannot be included in the budget or the outreach plan for fiscal year 2023-24 because of those concerns. As I mentioned, at the May thirty-first special meeting of the rent board, the board listed or asked, requested staff to, to address some concerns that they had and to look into the translation of rent board documents and the interpretation of rent board meetings. Previously mentioned, the conducting of hybrid board meetings and designing creative outreach projects. At that meeting on May thirty-first, the board approved option B, which among other things, provides funding for publicly posted translation and of all rent board documents with meetings held every other month. Prior to making any final decisions on the budget, it is important to discuss how outreach and education funds can best be utilized. Now, translation costs associated with public posting of the rent board agenda packet is not really an effective use of funds for outreach and education activities at this time. Board meetings, first of all, are generally not an effective outreach and education tool or activity. And in fact, outreach and education activities are properly housed within the activities and services provided by the rent program. Now, finally, each individual board member has been briefed on other significant concerns regarding the public posting of translated agenda packets. So, now, there have been some recent unfounded claims that the direction, the change in direction and the changing staff recommendations has been somehow the result of staff attempting to manipulate, you know, the direction of the board or the board's policy and budget decisions. I wanted to dispel this narrative and urge the board to understand that staff have been making their recommendations based on the information, the best information available to them at the time. Furthermore, all of this has been happening in the midst of staff having to continue managing the day-to-day operations of the rent program, training new board members and having, and be, and required, and having the requirement to adopt a budget by the end of the fiscal year so that staff can begin billing for the rental housing fee, which again, funds the program. Now, that has, this has unfortunately left some members of the community and perhaps some board members with questions about staff and why there's been a change of direction so much recently. So, in answering the questions in front of you, So in answering the questions in front of you, I hope the board and public understand that staff is acting in the best interest of the board and the agency. Now if we don't act in our best interest to protect the agency, program services may suffer, which of course is not in the interest of the board or the community. So the first question is, why was option A presented as an option if staff recommended against it? And why was option A not recommended? Just to recap, option A was presented as an option as, because the board directed staff to trans, to present translation budget options, and the staff wanted to make sure that the board had all of the options available for discussion, even if this option, as in the case of the, of option A, was highly problematic and not feasible in terms of its impact on staff and their ability to consistently meet the required deadlines. So why was option B recommended? Option B was recommended because it would preserve staff's ability to meet the deadlines in a realistic manner for publishing the board packet, to protect staff from burnout and the impact that burnout could have, including staff leaving the agency. It would also allow staff to continue to produce this, the work product at the same level that they've been able to do so historically. So now why is staff now changing their recommendation regarding option B, and now recommending an alternative option that was presented at the May 31st special meeting of the rent board? So after the board meeting, when option A and option B were presented, option B was recommended, and then option B was recommended, staff became aware of serious concerns around both option A and B. Central to those concerns is that both option A and B require public posting of the translated agenda packet. Staff were not, as, as we mentioned at the last board meeting, staff could not limit the public posting to any, one particular language, to not just Spanish or any other language other than English. This reality could lead to unbudgeted spending on translation costs, and you know, the board is aware that translation costs could be up to $3,000 per agenda packet, and we have to spend this money because anything that goes out to the public must be done by a certified translator and not an online translator, such as Google Translate. The financial, potential financial instability that this could cause the agency, in my view, is not something to take lightly. I'm concerned it could lead to future deficits, and ultimately, that could impact rent program services. So to protect the agency and avoid unnecessary risks, staff recommend the alternative option be adopted for fiscal year 2023, '24. Now, although not recommended by staff at this time, the board could opt to move forward with option B, and consider whether to translate the entire agenda packet or parts of the agenda packet as a means for reducing some of the potential costs and risks to the agency. Estimating the costs of translating these documents that are listed on the next slide, I want the board to know that it's not an exact science. That is partly because each agenda report, each appeal recommendation, and other rent board documents can differ significantly in size and number per board meeting. Now staff have put cost estimates together, and staff are available to brief the board on what those parsed-out agenda item cost could be, if the, if the board were to choose to move forward with option B.
Point of personal privilege, I read, I've read two or three times, but here I was looking for like a clear concise statement, option A is blah, 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 option B is blah, blah, blah. That would help me reason through this. Option A is not deep within me so that I know immediately what that is. So I think I need to be reminded, what is option A clearly, precisely, succinctly? And what is option B? So when we're talking about this, I'll know what we're talking about.
Understood. Option A would require the public posting of the entire agenda packet and associated rent board documents, withholding monthly board meetings as we currently are. We made a recommendation against option A because of the impact it would have on staff trying to meet a deadline or deadlines that were not realistic. I can go into, I don't know if you understand what I mean by that, but essentially, per the Brown Act, the rent program must publish the agenda packet within 72 hours of the board meeting. Now, it takes approximately two weeks to have an entire agenda packet translated. So what that would essentially do is give staff no more than about a week to put together all of the agenda items that would need to go before the board to meet not only the Brown Act requirements, but also to make sure that the entire agenda packet was translated in time. I've spoken with staff, and they're very concerned about the impact that it would have in terms of them trying to meet these deadlines. I'm concerned that it would, you know, cause staff burnout. I used the word attrition at the last board meeting, but that basically means staff saying, I've had enough of this unrealistic, you know, work expectation, I'll find another place to work. So that, I don't know if that was succinctly as I could have done.
Yes, that was succinct enough. And option B?
Option B would also allow for the public posting of all, of the entire agenda packet. However, it would, it would institute holding meetings every other month, in order for staff to be able to adequately have, you know, have enough time to put together a good work product or to be able to meet the deadlines. Option, as adopted by the board, option B also included the addition of two interpreters instead of one. Trying to think if I'm missing anything, I think that's, that's it with option B.
Okay, thank you. What I was remembering then was that, and maybe I'm getting ahead of everything, but there's a new recommendation that sort of combines them, is that true?
Yes, but it's probably better for me to just get to that slide, because.
Okay, fine, thank you so much.
Thank you. So in front of you is the list of documents the board would need to consider and examine if the board moves forward with option B, or for that matter, any option that includes public posting of the translated agenda packet. The board should know that any of the listed rent board documents can be translated into any language by four individual board members used at board meetings, or by request by members of the public using pretty accurate online translation coupled with a brief review by our bilingual staff. Now, if the translated documents are publicly posted, they will need to be done through certified translation, which costs at a minimum six cents per word, and again, approximately $3,000 per agenda packet. Now, there are some additional reasons to consider this alternative budget option. First is that publicly posting a translated agenda packet would not necessarily increase participation at board meetings. For one, board meetings are generally not considered an outreach and education activity. The board meetings are there to address governance issues and direct staff on policy direction. Now, governance issues and governance activities are connected to other rent program activities, but they are not a part of the regular program services such as counseling mediation, the rent adjustment process, legal referrals, et cetera. Historically, attendance at board meetings is low, and that's in my humble opinion, in large part because most people, and especially people who have families, generally do not have the time or energy to spend several hours in the evening attending a rent board The other reason to consider is that the entire agenda packet can be translated for individual board members at very little or no cost. This internally translated copy of the entire agenda packet in Spanish or any other language could be provided upon request to individual community members prior to or after the board meeting, of course with ample notice prior to the board meeting. The other reason to consider the alternative budget option is that the board can direct staff in this upcoming fiscal year to investigate and research future options for publicly posting translated agenda packets and other rent board documents, options that would presumably avoid the risks associated with currently publishing the entire agenda packet or the So the recommended action tonight is to receive the agenda report on the rent program's outreach activity plan, and provide direction related to potential revisions to the proposed fiscal year 2023, '24 budget. And, related to that, translate only the agenda for public posting in Spanish or any other language that's chosen by the board, while providing individual board members with fully translated copies of the entire agenda packet and associated rent board documents. Monthly board meetings would be added back into the budget as well. The budget attached to the agenda report reflects option B from the May 31st, 2023 special meeting, and would have set fees at $217 for fully covered units and $123 for partially covered units with an overall budget of $2,967,155. Now if the board approves the recommended alternative option, the corresponding fees would be $220 for fully covered rental units, and $125 for partially covered rental units, with an overall budget of $3,4,698. The proposed revised budget would include, per the board's direction, the funds for two interpreters instead of one, remove the cost of translating each board packet for public posting, and they would also include retroactive salary increases that have been agreed upon by the various MOUs. And with that, myself and Fred are available to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the board?
Vice Chair Guadalupe, may I make a statement real briefly?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Vice Chair Guadalupe and rent board members. Thank you for coming. I know it's, it's an off day, you're probably tired, somewhere you're sick, appreciate your time. That was a long presentation, I know you've already been sitting for an hour, so you're, you're likely ready to ask questions. I just want to remind the board that today is not a policy discussion, you know, today is, is a budget proposal, so you're just trying to figure out how much money you want to allocate to certain things. If, if you, for instance, want everything translated, we can have a discussion how to do that in the future. But if you decide today you want everything translated, your job is just to figure out how much money to put into that line item of translation. You don't have to discuss the ins and outs of how that looks. So just please bear that in mind, there's no policy being made today, it is just how much money to allocate for each line item as you see fit. And of course, I'm here if you have any questions. One last thing, I know we all spoke about some illegal issues, I just want to remind the board not to have any legal discussion, you know, leave the legal talk to the lawyer. If you have any questions, I can, I can help you navigate it. But, but with that, yes, feel free, and feel free to talk about what you will talk about if there's any, if you say something that may go beyond the parameters, it's okay, I will just remind you, and don't feel guilty or bad about it, you can keep asking your questions, so don't feel like you're scared to ask questions either. You're obviously here to ask questions and represent the things that you want to represent. Thanks.
Thank you, Charles. So are there any questions from the members of the board?
Yo si tengo preguntas. Estaba viendo su programa de embajadoras.
I was seeing your, your, your program of.
Embajadoras o embajadores. Y vi que en el presupuesto no se puso que tenía algún costo.
And I saw that in the question, and they didn't, they didn't have costs for that.
Tienen planeado algo ya, o simplemente es algo que van a pensar para hacer en un futuro?
You already have something planned for that, or is that just something you're thinking about doing in the future?
It, it is something that we're thinking about doing in the future. We did not, this is something that we wanted the board to be aware of as a potential activity for addition to the comprehensive outreach plan. And it was added to the presentation in large part to address some of the questions and concerns that Vice Chair Guadalupe brought up about what is the board, what is the rent program doing in terms of new or creative outreach projects. As I mentioned in the presentation, the ambassador program is really just an extension or an alteration of a program that we do have in place already that was delayed by the pandemic, which is the targeted outreach to key stakeholders. The difference is that we would invest more time with those key stakeholders, doing presentations, answering questions, setting up kind of longer appointments, and investing more in that relationship rather than doing a more of a scattershot approach, or an approach where we're trying to reach as many people as possible to just make sure they know we exist.
Solo que ese programa realmente sí me parece una buena idea para poder alcanzar a comunidades que hasta ahora no han sido alcanzadas.
So in reality, I think that's a good idea, that plan is a good idea to reach the people in our community that have not, that we're not meant to reach yet.
Hay otras organizaciones que tienen este tipo de programas, que yo las conozco porque también pertenezco a dos.
There are those programs that have those type of, of plans because. There are those programs that have those type of outreach plans because I've seen them and I all participate in those programs.
Y en esas, y en esas personas van de diferentes comunidades, tanto proamericanas, vietnamese, medio oriente.
And those programs reach different communities, the African-American community, the Middle Eastern community, various other ethnic communities out there.
Y si aquí dicen que una de las cosas es de boca a boca, esa es una de las buenas, es una excelente opción para que realmente lleguemos a más comunidades, que no solo hablen inglés sino que hablen otros idiomas.
And you say that the word of mouth is a good way to reach so many other communities out there.
¿Ustedes saben cuáles son los otros idiomas que se necesitan aquí aparte de español?
Do you know what are the other languages that are needed here apart from Spanish?
Me gustaría saber eso. Obviamente, yo no lo sé.
I would like to know that because I don't know that.
What other language would be necessary in terms of what?
En las personas que viven aquí en Richmond y no solo hablan, no hablan inglés, no sé. Hay otras comunidades aparte del español que, que otros idiomas se hablan aquí.
Of the people living in Richmond who may not speak English, who may speak other languages?
There is, I shouldn't say there is, there are quite a few monolingual Cantonese and Mandarin speakers that we work with. Our assistant clerk, Ramona Howell, who helps oversee our billing unit, regularly receives requests from landlords, particularly landlords, who speak only Cantonese, for example, requesting that documents be translated into that language. I don't know if that's, I know that's not the only language that has been requested, but it, there have been, that's at least one example that I know of. And we've also received requests in Vietnamese as well. So for example, you know, there are, there are some property owners who don't speak English fluently. They may speak Cantonese or Vietnamese or another language. They may need to go to a rent board hearing or understand rent board documents, and they have requested those documents to be translated in the past.
Y los documentos que, que se publican, las postales y todos, todos los documentos que se ofrecen a los, a los que rentan y a los dueños están en otros idiomas aparte que solo inglés o español?
And all the flyers and documents that are sent out to the community, are they also in those languages that they just expressed? Or are they only in English?
We do not generally, our requests for translation are generally done on a case-by-case basis. So we can provide that translation, oftentimes at no cost by doing online translation. There are some cases where staff have to spend funds on translation if it's an official hearing document or something like that. But in most cases, it's a case-by-case request. We, since we have a large Spanish-speaking population, a lot of our forums, most of our forums and most of our outreach materials are translated into Spanish in particular. And the funds that are included in the budget are ready for translation. I think it's over $8,000, I believe, are used to translate those flyers, those informational packets, or a forum that needs to be in Spanish.
No podemos tal vez que las postales solo para dar a conocer el programa de reembor se han hecho en otros idiomas.
Should we maybe have the postcards informing people about reimbursements? Could we have those made in other languages?
Reimbursements? I don't understand what you mean by reimbursements.
Están diciendo ustedes que llevan postales, llevan anuncios, cosas que para que la comunidad sepa del reembor, que existe este programa.
You're saying that you guys send out flyers and postcards and things to the community so they know that this program, the rent board exists?
Que van a ferias de la comunidad, que van a, hacen programas entre, con otras organizaciones, pero cuando van a esas organizaciones hay personas que no solamente hablan español. Entonces se han tratado tal vez de poner en otros idiomas que no sea solo español.
So when you go to community events or community fairs and you're handing out the information, have you encountered people who maybe don't speak English or Spanish? And the question is, are you giving them something in English that they do speak?
I don't know of any particular examples, per se, but if a member of the public came up to one of our tables, for example, and when we go to Juneteenth, and they said, "I would love to get some documents translated into any particular language," we can work with that person to get those documents translated. The difference is that it wouldn't require certified translation. We could do the translation ourselves using online programs and staff review.
Creo que no me estoy dando a entender. Lo único que tal vez estoy pidiendo es que tal vez las postales que hablan del reembor sean traducidas en diferentes idiomas. O sea, somos el rebor y ofrecemos tales servicios, pero que esos sean traducidos en otros idiomas.
Maybe I'm not making myself clear. What I'm asking for, what I'm seeking is that, is that our postcards or our flyers that are sent out to the community who we are, that they should say, "We are the rent board. This is what we do. This is what we offer." Those should be translated. We should have those translated to the various languages of our community members.
For mass mailing outreach projects, for a lot of the outreach that we perform, we make sure that it's in both Spanish and English in particular. We certainly could look into, I mean, we also, I think on the, on the, on our postcards or other documents, I believe, and I could be wrong, that there's information for the public to know that they can request other languages if they're interested.
Does anybody else have any more questions from the board?
I have a comment. In looking at...
Turn on your mic. There's a little switch underneath there.
Is that better?
There might be another one.
Maybe one of those next.
One is mine.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. My comment concerns what I'm reading here about translate only the agenda for public posting while providing individual board members with fully translated copies of the agenda packet. Couldn't we say something like providing individual board members who request a fully translated copy of the packet? Because I won't request it, so there is one less. Just that comment. Also, I'm not sure where we are about one translator or two translators?
Per the board's direction, we would include two interpreters per board meeting.
Two interpreters?
Yes, to allow for breaks and to allow, so that board members can recover from the arduous activity of interpreting.
Okay, because what I read was one interpreter with a 15-minute break, like three and a half hours or something. Am I reading old information?
Yeah, that was the old information from previous recommendation. The board altered that recommendation at the May 31st meeting to include two interpreters.
Okay, and the recommendation now is that the monthly meetings are back in the budget?
If the board approves staff's recommendation, then we would produce a budget that would include that.
Yes, okay, that's, okay, those are my only comments, questions.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, Madam Clerk, please call public speakers if any.
We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for any of us?
Well, I would make a motion to accept the recommended action on the alternative budget option. And I think, I think it's really important that we have the outreach to get to all the different languages that exist here in Richmond. And I think now that we're aware of it, we can move forward and keep working on it. But I personally just, I don't feel like I have a good enough background to go any farther than where we are now. And then I think we should spend this next year really figuring it out and figure out how we can reach everybody. But I think at this point it'd be a good idea to accept the alternative budget option. So I would, I would... Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the alternative budget option at this point.
Thank you, board member Height. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay.
Yes, I just want to be clear what I'm going to vote for. So when you say that, am I voting for monthly board meetings back in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Is that, does that work for a motion and a second?
Is it, is it appropriate?
Yeah, and who's second? Was it Board Member Espinoza?
Espinoza.
Okay, yeah, and just so I'm clear, it's option B where, it's what the board did last month, which is option B with a modifier, which is to add monthly meetings back in and to translate only the agenda for public posting while providing, upon request, individual board members with fully translated copies. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, I could take a vote. Board Member Dawkins?
Yes.
Board Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Board Member Height?
Yes.
Vice Chair Guadalupe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with Chair Cantor absent. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers. And scheduling, sorry. Not used to that yet.
Real quick, and if any of the board members are going to attend the Juneteenth Festival, we intend to be there, so maybe we'll see you there this Saturday. I believe that at Nickel Park, as it usually is. We also have a webinar on the maintenance of net operating income petition process, which is the process that landlords go through if they want to ask for an additional rent increase above the maximum allowable rent in cases where they feel they, or where they are not receiving a fair return. And that's for June 30th. In terms of scheduling, I believe I need to consult real quick with staff and the board as to availability for the next board meeting. And I believe we need to have a board meeting very, very quickly to give enough time to have the budget approved by the end of the fiscal year. So, Board Clerk Cynthia, do you have your calendar out?
Yes, I... I believe we looked at Monday to June, we're talking about June, right?
Yes.
The only...
In order, well, first we have to have, we have to present to the board what they just requested?
Yes.
And then after that is approved, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Charles, we need 10 days to post for this public hearing for the final budget to be adopted. Is that correct?
Yeah, you need 10 days. I didn't understand the first part, but you do need 10 days to post. I think what's probably more appropriate is we can just shoot an email. Staff will pick, staff will pick the day because our time is very limited and we don't really have that much wiggle room, so you'll probably only be presented with two, two days, two days to choose from. Staff will send you an email and you can choose which day is more appropriate.
My question is, what about the June 21st meeting? That's a regular meeting, so what we're doing with that, are we canceling that one?
I don't know. I have to see, we'll figure it out and then we can email the board. And if I, if I can, just on a separate issue, I just want to remind board members and staff, but board members primarily, that if you do attend the Juneteenth meeting because you just want to, which is fine, you can do that, that's fine. And if you bump into each other, that's fine. Even if it's a majority of you, that's fine. But please do not talk about anything related to the rent board or rent control. I know you'll be really tempted to, but just enjoy the festivities and talk about your vibrant lives. You know, you don't have to talk about rent control.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, are we...
If that's it, so as he mentioned, I'll send out an email with the dates and we'll figure out the June 21st if we need to, because that's the regular meeting, actually. So we just have to talk more about what we're going to do with that meeting. And I'll send an email to inform y'all about that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So whenever you're ready, you can adjourn.
So with that, yeah, meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.